Next thing on the agenda is a current use update.
Good night, Ray. Good evening.
Good evening.
I put a report in all your packets. Anyone have any questions? Yes.
Just a comment. Certainly, it was good to look through the history, how this has progressed through the years. I was in communication with DRA representatives, really asking them, in particular, the formulas that they use to set valuations of different categories of land. How in the world do they come up with those? Because I could see a steady rise and then a fall-
And a fall.
-in the curve on everything that they had on the state. So, how did they arrive at it, number one? And number two, did people have, from any of the communities, have an opportunity to offer suggestions or to participate in their public hearings? And I was told, sure, that's always welcome. So, I just think we need to spend more time and attention with that, because that's, as you pointed out, that's a huge part of our land mass-
It is.
-that's tied up in current use.
And the new 2017 values, they haven't been adopted yet, but the proposed values have gone up from sixteen, just so you know, we're on the rise again.
Yeah. It's a bit alarming to see the downward trend.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But they do, they go up and down and with the economy and-
Sure.
Any questions?
Yeah.
So, is your department going and looking at some of these files to make sure that they're up to date and accurate?
Yes, we are. We're about a third of the way through the alphabet at this point. We had to put that aside to do our exemptions and credits. And now that they've been all reviewed and all the decisions have been made, we're going back to current use.
Yep. That was my question.
Good question, man.
Can you also have a question for?
Yeah. Thank you for putting this together for us. I was particularly interested in the stewardship range and where we are. And in many instances, I don't know that we're at the midpoint, but-
We're basically at the midpoint or a little bit above midpoint.
So, what does it take if the council should decide to push that to the right of midpoint and look for more?
I think we'll have to have our contract forester go out and look at some of our larger forest areas to give us a grade on them, to see if it warrants an increase on the value.
Okay, so, I think it's the state allows us, say on farmland, $25 to $425 is the range of assessment. If we wanted to assess beyond the $229 value that we are at now, it requires an outside assessment, or is it just something this council can do and say that we will now set the rate at $425 an acre?
Well, I don't think they'll allow that. There's been a lot of case law that if towns and cities are too high, they appeal to the board, and the board has the cities and towns back off a little bit. But I can certainly find out what the process is.
Well, as was mentioned earlier, we have so much land in current use, and I forget the number you gave us.
Seventy something, seventy something.
Seventy thousand?
Seventy percent.
Seventy percent, and the dollar value was?
Dollar value, $27,739,000 is the ad valorem value with the current use value at 1.1 million. So, there's quite a difference between the two. So, I can find out from the DRA what the process is and what we have to do in order to raise the value properly so it doesn't get challenged.
So, having said that, you know, the interesting part for me was, was here we sit, always trying to find revenue. And it's on the property tax, there's no question about that. And we sort of sit in the middle of current use assessment ranges.
I can also check with other towns and find out where they are. The majority of them, in the classes that I've taken, majority of them are mid-range or slightly above mid-range. But I certainly can get that information for you if you want a comparison.
Yeah, I'm just, again, we're always facing revenue shortfall. And it just seemed to me with seventy percent of the current use of our property in Claremont, it just seemed to me that we didn't receive a lot of tax revenue. And we are always stretched to try to find dollars.
Okay, I'll see what I can find out for you.
I think last time you told us how much actually came in from current use, dollar value, towards-
Forty-seven thousand dollars?
Oh, is that what it was? And I'm not, I don't know, I don't remember what it was, but it wasn't much, less than $50,000. So, you know, the bulk of our properties are taxed extremely low, and it's very difficult to tell somebody who sits on less than a half acre with a home, subdivision, to pay $8,000. And you've got all these other properties out there that pay $47,000. So, it just seems strange to me, and I think the public needs to continuously be aware of that.
Okay.
Something is certainly, certainly doesn't seem to be adding up.
Just to follow up on Counselor Temple's thing, if you can do it, the state won't let us. Maybe we have to get a legislator to change the system a little bit, so we can get better value out of our current use land.
I was just wondering, when was the last time this was even looked at? I mean, as far as-
It gets updated every year when the new rates come in. These are the 2016 rates until-
I wasn't referring to your department, I was referring to, as a city council, for a review. I mean, I haven't had this discussion about current use, about raising. So, I think it's a great, great area for some revenue, in my opinion.
I just want to kind of go off Counselor Temple's thought, and I don't want this to be taken that I in any way disagree with him, I actually do agree with him. I just want to try to understand a dynamic. If we, if the Claremont City Council were to move these assessment ranges more to the right, and it was not upheld, we would owe that money back to those people. So, in a sense, if we do anticipate moving these ranges, we would have to hold some money in escrow, right, for the anticipation that we might be challenged?
Right.
So, we might not technically receive the benefit of those increases until every, all the dust settles out and we know what we were legally allowed to do.
That's right.
Okay, I just wanted to, I faced that issue in another community, and it was essentially $400,000 being parked in escrow for years and years and years.
Any other questions?
Thank you for pointing that out. That's what we do anyway, isn't it? When people come in and don't like their taxes, they have the ability to appeal.
Right.
And we have-
They file abatements and-
Yeah, the abatement, and there's, what is it, an overlay account or something? Yeah. An overlay account, so it'd be something like that is anything we brought into that. But I really don't think the citizens of Claremont realize the amount of property that is in current use and generates less than $50,000 towards everything we try to do as a full-service community.
Right.
I don't think they realize it.
Counselor Klosky.
Any other questions? Yes, go ahead, Mr. Klosky.
Is there, when you're checking with other communities and what range that they're in, can you find out, or maybe we have access to it already, I don't know, but, I mean, sixty-nine percent of our total land mass, what are other communities experiencing?
What's their- What their percentages are?
That seems really high, but I'm curious for other communities in New Hampshire.
I think Keene is about the same, in speaking with the assessor. You did? Okay.
I did a survey a couple of years ago, because this is exactly the kind of stuff that was driving me mental. Salem has two percent of its land in current use, so it's, up in Colbrook, they could have seventy-five, you know, they, I mean, a lot of, a lot of the communities are a lot like us, they have seventy percent, they have a huge amount of numbers. In the cities, it's not as much, because more of them are built out. So, if you want to look at how you grow your city, you know, the downside is you're going to need more services and schools, and as you build out the city. But on the other side, you've got a huge amount of land in current use. And I think part of that range that you were talking about, that Counselor Temple was talking about, part of that is the quality of the wood that is on those properties that makes a difference on what kind of a range that you could have. So, you couldn't just arbitrarily tell everybody, okay, we're now going to be at the top of the range, and you keep your land in current use or not. So, you know, I think that's where that pushback would be, is the quality of what is in current use, which is how most everybody ends up in the mid-range or slightly higher. But it does fluctuate. There are a lot of cities that have a lot less of their land in current use, and so I kind of tried to concentrate on the cities, because in rural places like Goshen, where I live, you know, we've got 780 people, and, you know, most, most everybody has one small lot, and everything else is in current use if they can possibly get it in it. So, but the pennies on the dollar that they paid to grow trees is a lot of lost income that everybody else has to make up the difference for.
I think one of the most interesting and telling things about current use is that I believe that Claremont has the size and the infrastructure to have vastly more people than it currently has. I think Claremont could easily go back to having eighteen thousand, twenty thousand people. But the ability to build out and have enough housing available for that is a challenge. And I recently sat down with our economic development team and started discussing, where could we possibly do new residential development? And shockingly enough, for a community that is almost forty-four square miles, we struggled to put together enough parcels to equal a hundred acres that would have water and sewer access, where we have tens of thousands of acres that do not have the incentive for people to explore doing development, carving out parcels and doing development projects and attracting water and sewer into those areas, because it's in current use, and they get to keep the land. Obviously, we would want to maintain a good amount of current use for conservation and recreation as its intended purpose. But out of approximately eighteen thousand acres, we could easily find a couple thousand acres that would be very good for development. But right now, there is an inhibition to creating the conditions for that development because of its tax status. So, I just find it rather shocking that in a community the size, the land area size of Claremont, actual land area that's potential for residential development is less than 200 acres.
Very limited. Wow.
Yeah, and also on this current use, if the landowner decides to leave it open for public use, they get a twenty percent reduction on their rate, too.
They do.
So, are most of these using that current use plan that they openly leave? A lot of them have them closed off, so it's not for public use.
They don't want the hunting and the-
Right.
So, basically, any town that has a lot of wooded area like we do has the same issue. And that's one of the trouble with legislature down in Concord. People who live in Manchester, Nashua, Rochester, when they pass these things, it has no effect on them. It just affects people like us in the same predicament, because they don't have much land use to offer, so they get full value for everything they have, pretty much. Thank you. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Klosky.
I'm under the, and several people I've talked to in the community are, I'm under the impression that a lot of the land is held by out-of-state owners, and I don't know that to be a fact, but-
Seventy percent of our current use is out of, I mean, non-Claremont residents.
And I, speaking to one of those individuals, they hold land for future development purposes, so have no intention of doing anything with it until better economic conditions. And this is probably a topic for another meeting, but I'm curious, in looking at where you said you were having a hard time pulling together parcels of land to equal a hundred acres, is it something that maybe someday we should look at incentivizing development in those areas by not requiring you to tie into city services if you were within X amount of miles from where we terminate? There's good and bad to that, is we don't, the other taxpayers in the community don't bear the expense to sending those services out there nor to the developer, but if they could put their own septic and wells in on the outskirts of town, maybe that would incentivize people to actually develop that land. I don't know, but-
No, that is true. And I, there are developers that would undertake such developments without public utilities. Public utilities just add that much more value to your development. I'm not familiar with the process to create a new well source in New Hampshire. I know that in Massachusetts, it was an inhibition to development, because it takes between five and eight years to get a new well permitted. So, unless you have ten years to focus on a development, your return on investment is, it's a fool's errand to try to undertake that unless you really have a parcel that has other value that you can capture. But in terms of, I mean, so the water side of it is a challenge. The wastewater sewer side of it is a lot different. There's a lot of mechanisms that you can undertake on a parcel without being connected to the treatment facilities. There's affluent fields, there's leach fields, there's large-scale septic tanks. I mean, those developments can happen. But I found the actual inhibition is creating a water source, a well, and the time it takes to get a well, you know, permitted and everything.
Just by our current code, you can't do that. So, that's what I'm saying, maybe it's something-
Actually, you can.
You can. How's that written?
I mean, I'm not going to look it up here, but no, you can, you can develop residential property in the rural zones with, and have a well. There are provisions under the state regulations for community wells for, you know, we couldn't get open space development passed, but here, but for that kind of development. And it doesn't usually, it might take a year. As Counselor Temple knows, probably from his experience, you know, they're, they're pretty, I don't know, rigorous about, you know, things like distances between the wells and the septic and things like that, but it can certainly be done. I just wanted to, if I could, mention something, and I don't know if this would be helpful to you, and it's probably in your documents, but way back in the Middle Ages, when this was first adopted, it was adopted just as I was going into my several terms in the legislature. And just from knowing some of the background personally, the primary goal was preservation of farmland. It wasn't all the other things that it's developed into. So, I don't know, and I think that's one of its goals today still, but I don't know if it might be helpful, and I don't know how difficult it might be, to break down these categories to see, you know, how many acres or what percentage is in farmland, productive forest land, you know, that kind of thing, so that you can, can see, you know, it would give you a broader picture of what you're looking at. Because I know it's pretty hard to stomach when somebody doesn't pay any taxes, because they're just sitting there with land not doing anything. But sometimes it's interesting to see how much is in productive farmland. So, it's just a suggestion, I don't know if that would be helpful to you.
I know something that might be helpful if we're looking in that level is the work that the Conservation Commission did with the natural resources inventory in the city. And at one point, the planning office came before the Conservation Commission with even city-owned parcels to decide what we wanted to keep for future offset of other developments in the city. And there are some parcels that the council decided that we would not put up for sale, that we were holding for those purposes. So, that's some important information in that document.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Folt, this isn't a public hearing. Unless the council approves you speaking, you're not going to speak. It's going to be up to the council. This is not a public hearing.
Yeah, I'd like to offer just an op-ed opinion, and it's really that. I would say maybe ten years ago or something, we looked at our zoning in this community, and we cleaned up some zoning, as I recall. And alluding to what Nick's talking about, we do have a lot of water and sewer infrastructure in place. And one of the concerns I've had for a long time is the development of Charlestown Road and how you look at that so that it maybe doesn't end up quite like Washington Street, just from a development perspective, an access perspective. There is a lot of property down in that area that goes down Grissom Lane that many years ago Claremont set aside for industrial development. And it's been empty for forty years, maybe more. And times have changed. Joy Manufacturing has left, some of the other big industries down there have left, and we've had an extremely difficult time in filling those with large employers, which may not be the very best thing for us. We may want a bunch of little employers. And I'd leave that up to the planning office. But there is a lot of, a lot of land down in that area that was set aside many, many years ago for industrial development that could very well have been, and it's always easy to second-guess, but could very well have been in the last few years rezoned for housing.
Mixed use, retail and residential.
Because down there, there's a lot, a lot of beautiful lots that look off towards the Connecticut River Valley and up towards the Scottney, and there's an awful lot of stuff down there. And there is water there in more than adequate supply. There's sanitary sewer there with a pump station that runs at 25 percent capacity. It's just waiting and has been waiting since, well, somewhere in the nineteen, late seventies or mid to late nineteen eighties, when that place was built. It's never, never done what we wanted, and when we lost, you know, Joy Manufacturing and Tanbrands and several others down there. So, maybe at some point in time, somebody needs to revisit and talk about, do we want this still to be industrial? Is the demographics of Claremont changing where people are going to work here? Or are they going to work in the Upper Valley and live here? You know, and I think across the river, perhaps Windsor might struggle with some of the same things when they lost a large Kona automatic. A lot of people in Windsor now commute to the Upper Valley to work, and they live back there. So, I have no magic wand to wave, but maybe at some point in time, some of those pristine views down there would be served towards housing. Because, let's face it, we're going to need tax revenue as we go forward, and it can't continuously go on the back of these little lots where the people are already paying six or $8,000 a year, they're dividing their homes up into apartments to try to survive, and now we're going to have in-law apartments out over garages, and we don't receive any more revenue from that with respect to the tax that I see. Maybe I'm missing the whole bolt, but my point is, at some point in time, we just, the bank is broke, and we've got to figure out how to have a different vision, maybe. Thank you.
Well, I think Counselor Temple has an absolutely great point. And right now in Claremont, we have about, I would say, three hundred and fifty to, maybe even upwards of five hundred jobs, manufacturing, well-paying jobs, that could be filled. Can-Am Bridges could hire a hundred and fifty people tomorrow and build out their second floor. The issue is, we don't necessarily have the workforce to meet that demand. But if we were able to build out those areas into quality housing, we could attract more people into Claremont and perhaps fill the industrial jobs that are available already.
Yeah, I would second what Mr. Temple says. He said this years ago, and I've gone and looked at these lots and thought about it from his point of view that he'd mentioned at the time, and those are some very desirable areas. Also, I was going to ask the council's approval, I'd like to hear Mr. Folt as well.
What's the council's wish?
Yes.
I've grown accustomed to it, really.
Does it sound like that?
Thank you, Counselor Folt and counsel. Bernie Folt, a word three. I had just a little information I'd like to give. It just so happens that last night, yesterday evening, there was a meeting of the Housing Subcommittee Chapter of the Claremont Master Plan Work, which I've been bird-dogging. There was not a quorum at last night's meeting, but they were able to have a good discussion. And one of the issues in Claremont, and this gets into what City Solicitor Taylor said about the failure of open space, what, five, six, seven years ago, it's partly also political, namely, there is a perception that if you build more housing, workforce housing, you will attract people to live in that housing, and also, those families will have children, and that will impact the school system. Now, there have been studies that show that that's not necessarily true, that bringing in more families, you're not going to raise your school rate just because of that. However, that is a political issue that some people have said, we don't want, be careful how you increase Claremont's population, because that might blow our sky-high taxes even higher, as using the school example. So, I'd just like to point that out. And what you're hearing on land use, housing, is being, pardon the expression, chewed on by the subcommittees. And the master plan chapters are starting to come forth. I don't think any of them have hit the city council, but I know some of them have hit the planning board. And so, the planning board is looking at drafts of final, pretty much final drafts of the master plan chapters. So, housing is yet to come for you and land use. The other thing on current use, there's an eye-popping number in Assessor Marlene's report. The difference between the current use assessment and fair market assessment is twenty, almost 27 million. And what that translates into, in taxes, is over a million dollars in, I hate to use this word, but I'm going to, in lost taxes. Now, that's a bad word, because Claremont should have some amount of current use for the purpose it was intended. But the part is to, but it's a phenomenal tax break, and how do you sort out, following the rules, what is desirable land in current use and what, what should be taxed at the higher rate? And that, of course, now, the landowner makes that decision by basically sticking in current use. Now, my understanding is that the city, the number that the city uses for- Now, my understanding is that the city, the number that the city uses for each of the categories applies to all the land in that category regardless of owner. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. One thing that could be done to change that, although I think it would take legislative action, is to make the range dependent on the assessment of the property. So if you had higher quality, the local assessor could adjust the range according to how it fit the land. As I said, I think that would take legislative change, but that would squeeze out a little more money, although it would add to an assessment burden to keep all that. The last thing I want to mention is, the council knows, but I want to say for the television audience, that I have done a RSA 91A request, request for information for the complete record of every property in current use in order to see, I'm almost done, in order to see the property owner, the property address, the parcel ID, the assessed value, the total parcel acres, the parcel acres in current use, and the current use category claimed, and whether the 20% adjustment is. Now, that's going to cost me some money, but I'll, I'll let other people see it for a very reasonable rate. Thank you. Just kidding, just kidding.
Yeah, if I could make just one closing comment in general. And again, I know we're not living in the 60s and 70s here, but a lot of stuff that we continue to hold on to is associated with that era. And Mr. Folt, I mentioned schools and housing, because we got to worry about an impact of extra children in the school. Well, Stevens used to graduate 225-plus kids
220, Mike was.
Out of the same high school, and now we're on a declining enrollment, and we graduate, and I can't speak with authority, but we graduate maybe 125. Half, half of what we used to do. And times change, I understand that. And what we do changes, and where we work changes, and how we get there changes. We can see that from the mills when people walked to work, to when people drove out to Joy Manufacturing or over to Windsor to work, to where they work now. But if our housing chapter comes out and says anything that reflects, we're not interested in new homes because we're worried about one and a half, two children into our school district, I would think that would be a great problem to solve. We'll take the kids, and we would like taxes as well. It'd be a great, a great problem to have. Thank you.
I was going to bring some of this up under the Future Agenda Items and Directives, but I'll bring part of it up now, is that we do need to have a discussion about workforce housing. I'm not talking about subsidized housing, I'm talking about workforce housing. I don't know how many people I talked to with the local manufacturers who come in, and they're not going to buy a house right off the bat. They're going to be looking for something to rent that's quality, or a smaller-type house, and a lot of them are going to have kids. And be honest with you, you know, just a few years ago, I had kids, they were in the schools. I was spending a lot more money in town than I am now, now that I don't have kids. And there's one thing about it, I know that's political, but we got to quit thinking of these young people, of the parents who are working hard, as liabilities. And the reason I say that is because, number one, these parents are spending a lot of money supporting businesses, supporting people fixing cars, supporting our local businesses, going out trying things, they're buying food for four, not for two, four to five, you know? The other thing is those kids, right now, we start talking about things like elderly exemptions, we start talking about people aging in place, we're starting to talk about the taxes, who's going to buy these houses that are becoming empty as people start to pass or start to move into assisted living? Those kids, done right, with a lot of pride in our community, are going to be the ones that support the next generation. We got to quit thinking of our kids as a liability. I know this isn't current use, but we got to have this discussion. How are we going to start increasing the workforce here? We're not growing industry because we're not growing a workforce. So, I mean, we got to start thinking about that. We can get that on the agenda.
And just to follow up on Councilor Temple's remarks, if the population and students going down, it hasn't impacted the increase of school budgets over the years of population declining, so the fallacy of more kids is going to increase the school budget, to me, is kind of offset, because it doesn't really...
A building has a set
Right.
fixed budget. And it's going to cost that much to keep a building running, heat and everything, regardless how many kids are in there. So, any other questions? Marlene? Thank you, Marlene.
Thank you.
Nice job, Marlene.
Thank you, Marlene.
Next subject is the ratification of union contract.
I had sent all of the councilors earlier a draft of the Department of Public Works contract. This was, I think, a very fruitful negotiations with the DPW. I want to thank them a lot for coming to the table with an open mind and understanding the position that the city is in. I think they really stepped up to the plate on this. So the two major tenants of this contract are, it's a one-year contract, the DPW employees are not taking any cost of living increase whatsoever, and they have approved lowering or raising their healthcare percentages for all new employees. Currently, DPW employees pay 10% of their healthcare plan, the city covers 90% of it. All new employees will pay 20%, the city will cover 80%. We already have two new DPW employees at those percentages. So I believe this, this was a very favorable contract for the position that the city currently finds itself in, and I want to thank the DPW employees for recognizing that.
I'd make a motion to approve the Public Works Union Contract. Claremont City Council here by approves the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Claremont and the AFSCME Council 93, Local 1348 Public Works Union, which calls for the following increases in salaries and benefits. For year 2017, the estimated increase of salary and benefits, $0. Said sums represent the additional costs attributable to the increase in salaries and benefits over those funds appropriated at current staffing levels. Because there is no increase in salary or benefits under the agreement for fiscal year 2017, there is no additional impact on the tax rate for the current budget. The city council further authorizes that the city managers designate to take such actions as may be necessary to implement this motion.
I'll second the motion.
And also my thank you to DPW.
I'd just like to comment before we vote. I was the council rep to the negotiations, and I have to follow up with the city manager said it was very thorough, and they were very, very open, and I have to give them a lot of credit. All they like to know is they're respected and appreciated by the council and the people in this community. And they did a good job, and the city manager did a good job, so I think this is the right contract for them, and I think we ought to ratify it.
I just have a quick question. Yes, and when I was reading the contract, any language change was in bold?
Yes.
Was in bold?
Yes.
And I noticed that on our next agenda for May, we're going to be doing other contracts. I guess we'll get a chance to review those as well, and they'll be in bold? Any, okay, thank you.
Happy to share the collective bargaining agreements with the council.
Any other questions? We have a motion made in a second. We have to have a real call on this?
No, it can be by majority vote.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes carry. The next thing on the agenda is Future Agenda Item.
Last month, the council received a letter from Claremont Historical Society regarding our discussions about the artifacts of the city, I believe it was from Mr. McElroy. And I think it might be good to have him as part of this discussion, since he runs the society, and see what they can do as well, public catalog, and see what direction this can go. I mean, it seems to fall in their wheelhouse. So, I mean, rather than us reinventing the wheel, get them involved in this. That'd be one thing. The other thing, once again, I mentioned earlier, I would like to get the workforce housing as an agenda item sometime. What would it look like? Things like that. I mean, I can go on and on about what I think, but I think that the young people and getting the workforce going is going to help increase our industrial potential. And right now, without that kind of thing, and without keeping youth in the community or finding at least ways to get young families in, I'll just put it out there, that's the roots to support the tree. Right now, those roots just aren't growing like they should. And so I'd like to get that in.
I'd like to go along with Councilor Pope's request on the workforce housing. In May, I don't have an exact date set, but I'm, it sounds like things are settling out towards the week of May 15th. At the Claremont Senior Center, we are going to be sponsoring, or I personally, I guess, will be sponsoring a presentation by two important people that have spent their careers doing workforce housing. One is a developer, Ted Carmen, from Concord Square Planning and Development, and his sort of legislative partner in crime is a lady named Eleanor White. And I've invited them up. They have written some legislation that was passed in Massachusetts that is a program to incentivize development of workforce housing. They are trying to get this legislation passed in all six New England states. They have it currently introduced in Connecticut and in Maine, and they would like to get it introduced in Concord here in New Hampshire. So they are coming up to give a talk and a presentation about what this workforce housing trust fund bill encompasses and what it could potentially do for New Hampshire and obviously Claremont. So I will share that information with the council as I get more of it settled out.
What was the date again?
Right now, we're looking at Monday, May 15th. And again, the location would be the Claremont Senior Center, because we actually have a fair amount of people that have been interested in attending. I mean, other legislators from Concord, other developers, and folks that have been pulling the rope in the direction of creating incentives to develop workforce housing throughout their careers are interested in attending this. Basically, it's a Ted Talk, because his name's Ted, and he's the one doing the talking.